Be surprised.
Your horse and your bicycle. Okay, that sounds good.
Yeah, I'm cool with it.
Andy, you good with it?
Yes.
We've gotten a message from a party that wants to know. Gail, I think you've indicated that they don't have all the documentation and they're concerned that they have provided all of it. So I think your list did not, in general, say that what documentation you thought was lacking. So.
Going by your spreadsheet on that one, but I'm pretty sure that when I scored it, because Spencer told me that I mentioned it was a yes. On your spreadsheet, it says they're missing documentation, but it must have been in the file if I scored it and gave it a yes. So when I was doing the missing documentation, I'm looking at your spreadsheet tonight. That's what, that certainly, you know, the whys and ends all run together eventually. And so that's what I was looking at when I made that comment.
I guess logistically, so if they, I'm going to name a particular business just so we can be specific. Country here, four yeses, one no. Connor mentions did not score a missing documentation underneath Kingery mentions no list of number of employees. So that seems like an example of someone who could simply provide documentation for consideration. Now, who is tasked with reaching out to these entities to say, "You were denied round one of phase two because you didn't provide this. You need to provide it by X date or it's a full denial."
Shane did that in the past. He went back to businesses in round one and asked for those things.
And I've been going back to people as they, you know, as they submit their applications. In the case of one business that is chatting back and forth here, it's an income verification report, and I believe that the type of business is not one that, where they thought their income, you know, verification would matter. And that's for the OCR qualification. So again, it's a, they would not qualify for OCR funding. But that doesn't eliminate them from consideration for a grant. At least it hasn't been passed.
Mackenzie just addressed that. She said they just need to make.
I'm trying to do two or three things at once, so if you could repeat it, I'd appreciate it.
Let her repeat that.
Which part? So I think it was just that if they could just provide a brief explanation, and to you, Mayor, would be good, and I'd be glad to review it. And if it makes sense, then of course, we push that out to council and say, "This is why." And if anyone voted no for documentation purposes, they could reconsider that based on that response.
That's fine. I'm game with that.
How are we going to get the word out about extending? The, you know, reopening, basically, the process for applicants? I did send out an email to all of the first round people who had, you know, received grant awards. And we did not get, you know, some of those back. And I think Gail addressed at least one of the businesses that had, you know, a good reason for it.
I would be happy to contact the business I mentioned. Debbie's chiming in, or somebody from the comments chiming in with a request to get a press release to the comment.
No, I don't see it in the chat.
It just disappeared.
I had to click on chat. It's from comment to everyone. Somebody should send me a press release about the extension. That's what it says.
Yeah, it's not appearing in my chat.
What about her one?
But yeah, it's coming up now. Okay, yeah, I can get a press release out to the comment. You'd need that, what, before Monday? Are you going to post it as a special, Debbie? Like you did with the COVID thing for the library?
She could do that.
Yeah. Great, thank you. So does the council need to vote on the 13? Make a motion and vote on awarding grants immediate to the match that they requested? Is that?
Yes, please.
Shouldn't we award the 13 approved businesses this evening? And the rest of the businesses will be awarded their requested amounts contingent upon them meeting their eligibility requirements and providing any pertinent documentation necessary.
Within the two-week time frame.
Within the two-week time frame.
And could you add to that the full amount or the amount that requested?
I think I did, but yes, I will add that. They will receive the amount requested.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And who was the second on that?
I second that.
Any other discussion?
Just to note, this is contingent upon your confirmation from curtsy that this is allowable.
For the extension of the?
Yes.
Should we break that into two motions?
No, I think that can just be part of the condition. So if everything that Gail said in her motion isn't possible unless curtsy approves it. So if not.
But do we, we don't want that to impact the awards.
Yeah, I'm seeing a blunder on that because let's say, let's talk hypothetical really quick. If we should, sorry, everyone. On Friday night, I keep throwing out all these different avenues. If you guys, if we find out from curtsy that's not possible, and then you have these businesses that have four yeses and one no, and you don't vote on them, and we're now beyond the deadline, that's problematic. So I think that there needs to be a second maybe motion that if it's not possible for the two-week extension, you all decide quickly what you're going to do about the rest of them that you did vote on because we thought, assuming we could give an extension. Makes sense?
I would make that motion. Like a contingency, essentially.
Yeah, contingency of the contingency because Ms. Connor's motion is perfect so long as curtsy doesn't give us any pushback. But if they do, then you're automatically disqualifying all of these other businesses that we just disregarded because we're assuming that they can be addressed at that next meeting. And I don't want to do that.
If curtsy can't, if they say no, we can hold a special meeting to go ahead and process through what we need to go through.
Yes.
Couldn't we just not add this to our February 1st meeting in two weeks? Can we go ahead and award tonight the 13 that we're all in agreement upon? Contingent upon, and the rest of them will be awarded contingent upon getting their documentation and their eligibility requirements met. And then if we have to look at something with curtsy, can we deal with that in two weeks? Or do we have to deal with it tonight?
I don't see how we could go beyond the first, frankly. So if we have to, you know, deal with the second, the follow-up for people who, you know, applied in this round and the people who have an extension, I think it would have to be in time for you to redo it on February 1st. We're also probably hearing from the next round of grants from OCR on that thing evening. I mean, that won't take very much time, but it's just a confounding factor.
How hard would it be to go back through the list and vote yea or nay on the others? Just so that that's done? And if it's yes contingent upon them providing X, Y, and Z, then it's passed. Of course, the 13, those are, those are already, we've already, we've already decided on those. But the others, just in case, is that something that the council wants to entertain? I mean, I think there's some automatic nos in there based on your scoring, but it seems like there's some others that are like four for it and one against.
I don't think that we can make any hard and fast determination on the businesses that we're waiting on documentation and group availability information from. Do you want me to resend my motion and just make it off the 13 tonight? That'd be easier, and then do something separate for the rest?
I think let's back up and make it clean like you're saying. So let's go ahead and get a motion on the table if you could to pass the first 13, and then we'll move on to how we're going to address the rest.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to amend my first motion. And it's going to state that it will simply be that the award will be given to the 13 businesses that were approved this evening in the full amount requested.
I'll second that.
Then on the amendment, all of those who are in favor of the amendment, the amended motion, signify with an I for nay or abstain. Gail?
Aye.
Laura? Sandy Flora?
Aye.
Spencer Kingery?
Aye.
What do you know, Sam?
Aye.
Okay, then do we wish to have a further motion regarding the reopening of the grant cycle?
Anita, before we do that, how soon do you think you could get some kind of information from curtsy?
I'll get it tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning?
Well, wait a minute, this is Friday.
Yeah, I know.
I can try to reach out to, I'll send an email. They may respond, so.
So Mackenzie, what do we need, how do we need to word this second part of this?
Can I ask for a break just real quick? Sorry, did we, Anita, I just want to make sure, did we ever find out the curtsy expiry or the, like, due date, essentially?
I wasn't able to find the email. To do that, I have to leave the rest of the meeting with the chat room and everything else. So it's kind of hard for me to find that at the same time. So I'll look for it once we get done with the meeting. And, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, go ahead, Mackenzie.
I'm just in my mind, I'm trying to be general, but I'm seeing so many breakdowns here. So I'm seeing a whole class of businesses that have applied. They've met the deadline. First, it doesn't have to be unanimous. What do we do with this other half of this list tonight that has applied? You can say, "We're not going to do anything. We're going to lump them into the potential businesses that are provided the extra opportunity with the extension, and we'll vote on it then." Or you could say, "We're going to vote on it now. If we do grant it, it's contingent upon them providing something. If they don't, then it's a denial." I guess I'm just trying to consider, what if these folks that applied, we find out from curtsy, "No, we need to know by Wednesday of next week," and we just flat out didn't vote on these?
Then we're probably going to have to fund them with our own money.
And so I guess that's my point. So like on, again, I'm not trying to pick on this business if anyone thinks I am. I'm not. I'm just going down alphabetical order. I'm finding the first simple four yes, one no. This country here, four yes, one no, it appears is because, based on at least two nos, that they just didn't provide a list of employees. Is it possible that council could go through these types of entity applications and say, "Yea or nay?" If no, then we move on. But if yea, you know, contingent upon them providing their list of employees. And if they don't, they don't get it. Or if they provide it and they have 75 employees, they don't get it.
When we make a motion, we don't have to designate where the money's coming from, correct? Just that they'll be awarded. What we're waiting on for curtsy is OCR.
Eligibility.
Right. And we do have enough money in our edit.
We know who's eligible for OCR from the ones who have filed. It's just a question of, you know.
Getting the documentation from them.
There are 18 businesses left, and even if each one were funded at the full amount.
It's 18 times 5.
What do we have?
90,000.
We have enough money to cover our obligation or, you know. So it may have to come out of our own coffers.
But when we set this initial program up, though, that's what we were setting off to do anyway. I mean, I don't have an issue with that because, I mean, when we first started this program, it was coming out of city budgets anyway, not OCR. OCR is just kind of a nice, you know, we're getting great workers for it, which is nice extra money. But we've already decided that we were going to spend city money on this program to help our businesses. And to be honest with you, we haven't really spent any much of city money. It's all been reimbursed back by OCR.
And in light of that, then, I guess, you know, the best-case scenario is it is reimbursed, and we have no timeline issues. And the worst-case scenario is we're spending, like Connor and Kingery are stating, out of city money, but it was budgeted for and it's part of the program. So it sounds like you guys have a good path either way you decide.
I'm going to make a motion that the remaining 18 businesses will receive their full requested amount, provided they turn in the necessary documentation and/or meet eligibility requirements in the two-week deadline.
And is that going to, are we going to open it back up then, Gail? You want to, more than some, where we can open it back up so we can get some of the other businesses that didn't?
That could be a separate motion to keep it cleaning.
Yeah, I think she was trying to just address the remaining businesses, I think. I'm just, the second motion, then move to the third motion.
Okay, that works.
And I know the application's going in for round three. And like I said, Lisa didn't mind me using her name tonight. She understood that it was her decision. She was thankful there's going to possibly be a round three. So she's okay. Either way, of course, she'd like to have the money, but she understands it's on her. So I'm okay with, I guess I'm okay with going either way.
Do we want to go ahead and vote on that motion?
I think the second.
Yeah.
Here's the second.
Second, Gail's motion that she just made for the remaining businesses.
Is there any discussion on that motion? Again, when your name is called, please signify whether it's an I and a or an abstain. Gail Connor?
Aye.
Sandy Flora?
Aye.
Spencer Kingery?
Aye.
What do you know, Sam?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, do you want to try a third one?
So for a third motion, make it that we open it up for the businesses' application process for another two weeks. And they are going to be required to make sure they have all the documentation for the, for the rapid plus. There's not going to be any more extensions after that. Just the two weeks.
Would you add contingent upon availability of funds?
Correct. That's fine.
Can I throw another crutch in by saying, oh, I just forgot what I was going to say?
I second that motion.
And so it's clear that this is an extension for a complete application, then there will not be an additional extension to said extensions.
This will be a complete, they have to have it, no ands or buts, all the documentation. Otherwise, it's going to get, their application will get tossed.
Oh, okay, so you guys are given two weeks for this additional round.
Correct.
Not like we're given two weeks for requiring documentation on the people just to have all the documentation for this. So we're giving them two weeks, but how much longer is it going to take us to score as needed? And then, you know, think about how months are coming. So again, I guess I just keep working on this curtsy deadline.
Yeah.
I don't have thoughts?
Well, the second, the second motion that was made is for the 18 remaining to get the stuff in. Obviously, we have enough money to cover them. And then the third one, that's going to be contingent funds, the application, which I'm pretty sure we'll have now. Let's still think we still have enough money in that, that we have to appropriate money with hand to cover it.
Mayor, will this require?
We had, what, 31 businesses or 33 businesses applying, and we had that over a month. I mean, that was, that seems like a lot of time, and that's all the businesses we got. So I don't foresee too many more for the following two weeks.
Chris is also over the holidays.
Mayor, will this require another meeting in February, a special meeting in February? Or since this is going to be beyond the February regular meeting, would this be addressed in March?
I'm sure we cannot go until March.
Okay.
So, you know, I'm sure, I would think that we are probably pretty far beyond what curtsy will be able to manage. Because, you know, if we extend, if we extend the application deadline for two weeks, and then it takes a week for council to turn around the scoring, you know, we would have to have a special meeting, like in the second week of February. But I don't think we should schedule it yet until we see, you know, if we're actually going to be able to do this, period. I think getting people to get their documentation in off of this first list, two weeks is very generous. And it sounds as if, as soon as that documentation is in and we have, you know, we, Mackenzie or someone looks at it along with me, we award the money, or it goes on the next docket for Board of Works. Is that kind of how people are envisioning this?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. So hopefully, we have most of this all on the first docket for the first, first of February. And then it's a question of whether we can extend the grant, you know, application deadline for new applications. So if we do make, I think we have an, I'm getting tied up in my tone here. So we've talked about opening up the application process for another two weeks. That one has to be contingent on what I find out from curtsy.
The more I think about it, to be honest with you, the more I think about it, the more I, I don't think we should just go ahead and not open it up for two weeks for additional, because we're going to have a third round for OCR. So in order to, you know, to make sure we're not, I'd say overspending, we're not overspending per se, but.
Overcommitting?
Yeah, I want to make, you know, I don't want to dry up the complete funds if we're going to get reimbursed by OCR and then have to sit on, you know, a short or a small amount of money left over. So I'm going to, I don't know, did I make a motion for the third? Because if I did, I want to resend that for opening it up for two weeks.
Resend your motion.
Yep, I'm going to resend my motion. Opening back up.
So basically, what's left on the table to discuss is what extension, if any, are we going to give to folks that just simply did not apply?
The ones that did not apply, I'm not going to open it back up.
Spencer, you're too close to your mic.
Sorry, sorry, I was reading my screen off of this, too. I say we don't open it back up. Just because we are going to go for a third round, and I want to make sure, I don't want to overcommit money. Just in case.
He rescinded that motion. So I think we're good there.
I will second that reset.
I don't think that's required.
I love the support. That's great. So can I ask clarification questions? So on Gail's motion that was seconded, which gave the remaining 18 businesses time to provide the full documentation for consideration, that timeline was also two weeks. So what's that timeline now? Does that?
I still think that'll be the two weeks because that's money that we have that we were being committed to this program. We got enough to cover them. So hopefully, OCR will give us the money. If not, we still have it to pay them out.
So we can leave that second motion alone?
Correct.
Hang on, so what date is that? Two weeks out from now is what? We're beyond Board of Works, so February.
I think we can only give them a week.
What date are you thinking, Mayor? Instead of saying one week, two week, can we just say the exact date?
Next Friday. How does that sound?
The 29th?
Yeah, the 29th.
That doesn't give Leon time to get stuff for the claims for the following Monday. You know what, if they didn't turn their paperwork in, or if they didn't meet their eligibility requirements, I think there might be two on here or three that we need to just like look at the income verification and whether or not they need to have that model. But most of the other ones, it was like an eligibility requirement or a financial statement or something.
I think we just need to either dive in and vote on them, or we need to say by, you know, noon on Thursday, the 28th, or whatever time it is that gives Leon enough time.
Can I say something, Mackenzie?
Of course.
Counsel? If you give them till next Friday to do it, and then the following Monday, we have a Board of Works, correct?
Right.
All right. All I have to have is five days' rest from the time the claims are submitted to present it to the Board of Works. But why couldn't the following Friday be a special Board of Works to just simply pass the docket for this?
I guess we could do that.
Well, for that, I mean, that will keep you moving in case you are going to run into a snag.
Yeah.
But all you need is the five days' rest. So if, if you, if, if you vote on it, or if you put it together, if that, if that has to be turned in, and you're now saying that you're going to approve them if everything's there, then those claims should be filed on the docket for the following Friday.
Yeah, timeline wise, that would work, I'm just questioning whether we, you know, um, need that much time for people to finish documentation or for us to verify. That's a long period of time still.
Okay, I'm going to amend my motion to state that the eighteen businesses have until noon on Friday, January twenty-ninth to turn in necessary documentation or proof of eligibility requirement to qualify.
Leanne, does that jive?
I, I'm trying. Gail, can you say it one more time for me?
Yes, I'm going to amend my motion to state that the eighteen remaining businesses have until noon on Friday, January twenty-ninth to, to turn in their missing documentation or proof of the eligibility requirements. Here it is.
Here it is.
Yes. That, that one worked.
So we need a second on that motion.
Second it.
Spencer, that was you?
Yep.
Yes, like you. Sorry, she just got you on that motion.
No.
No.
Okay. Uh, so on that motion, uh, vote I, nay, or abstain when your name is called, Gail Connor. Aye. Sandy Flora?
Aye.
Spencer Kingery?
Aye.
Cody Nelson?
Aye.
Who did I miss?
My guy just leaves him.
Yeah. Okay, motion carries. So, are we done with this?
Yes.
Stay with me while.
All right. Moving right along. Um, we have two resolutions to, uh, look at quickly. Um, so the next order of business is, uh, proposed Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash one, authorizing an OCR grant application for phase three CDBG funds for resilience grant programs for local businesses. Is there a motion to pass the Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash one?
I make a, I make a motion to, uh, approve Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash one for the third round.
Is there a second?
Second it.
Any discussion?
Will you read it in its entirety, please?
I'm ready. Have to find it first.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
I got it.
Cody or Spencer?
Spencer, second it.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Resolution of the City Council of Delphi, Indiana, authorizing the submission of the COVID-nineteen program application to the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs and addressing related matters. Whereas the City Council of Delphi, Indiana recognizes the need to provide working capital to local businesses to continue operations, support remote work, and retain jobs for low-to-moderate-income persons. Whereas the Housing and Community Development Act of nineteen-seventy-four, as amended, authorizes the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs to provide grants to local units of government to meet the housing and community development needs of low and moderate-income persons. And whereas the City Council of Delphi, Indiana, has conducted or will conduct public hearings as required by the grant to assess the housing, public facilities, and economic needs of its low-to-moderate-income residents, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Delphi, Indiana, that the mayor is authorized to prepare and submit an application for grant funding to economic development activities under the CDBG COVID-nineteen program for the purpose of providing grants to businesses to retain low-to-moderate-income jobs by providing working capital to continue operations and support remote work. Number two, costs for executing and administering the resulting grant, including general administration and project management, contracts and agreements pursuant to regulations of the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs, and the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development are authorized. Such costs will be borne by the City of Delphi through rainy day and/or edit funds. There is no local match requirement for this grant. Then passed and resolved by the City Council of Delphi, Indiana, this twenty-second day of January twenty-twenty-one at or around six o'clock PM local time. We'll go past that.
Close now.
So we have a motion on second, is there any discussion? We will proceed to the roll call vote, so when your name is called, indicate I, nay, or abstain. Gail Connor?
Aye.
Sandy Flora?
Aye.
Spencer Kingery?
Aye.
Cody Nelson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, note that there will be a public hearing on this grant, uh, at the beginning of our February first meeting, so we'll call, call meeting to order, um, take roll call, and then pretty much open it, suspend the meeting, open the public hearing and conduct that, close it, and reopen our other meeting. So we move next to proposed Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash two, authorizing a grant application for the first round of the Community Crossings Matching Grant Program uh, to address drainage and street improvements at Tally Ho, Tally Ho Court, and Terrace Lane. This is a resubmission of the project from the second twenty-twenty app, the second round of the twenty-twenty application cycle for Community Crossings Matching Grant, as this project was not awarded at that time. Is there a motion to pass Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash two?
Did, did you already correct it, um, the typo at the top? For the resolution on the packet, it was twenty-twenty dash two? Close the small typo.
Thanks. Yeah, we'll get that corrected.
Okay. I mentioned, oh, I mentioned passing.
Spencer has moved. Is there a second?
I get it.
Cody, that you can?
Yeah.
Is there any discussion?
What's the amount?
The amount of the grant is, well, the amount of the match for the, the grant will be eighty-six thousand, eighty-eight dollars.
Can you repeat that, somebody was talking?
Eighty-six thousand, eighty-eight dollars. Eight six, oh, eight eight.
Where is the match coming from?
Uh, the match would come from Motor Vehicle Highway Fund.
And there's what, like a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in there?
That, that's in the budget, there's quite a bit more in the fund. Um, not sure that we'll actually, if, even if we get awarded this in the, uh, in this round, it's not clear that this, that those funds would actually be expended in, uh, twenty-twenty-one, but there is sufficient, um, funds, I think, Leanne, correct me, is it around three hundred something? In the MVA, so we might, might have to do an additional appropriation out of that fund, or, you know, to get this year. But there's sufficient money in the fund itself.
And what is the timeline for the project if we get the funding?
That'll, we would hope to get it started yet this year, but it'll depend on how long it takes us to get, um, the, you know, the paperwork back from, from the state. Uh, we still haven't received our signed grant application from the October twenty-third submission last year. Um, so if this gets awarded in April and you add six to eight weeks onto that, and then we, you know, go out to bid, and then, you know, we're going to get, we may get it started this year and, and completed, but, um, it's not clear that, that will be in this, you know, in this calendar year.
Okay, thank you.
If it is in this calendar year, then we would need, and, and if we get to, um, get, you know, the project paid or out of twenty, twenty-one funds, then we would need to do an additional appropriation.
Um, what are the stipulations on expending the Motor Vehicle Highway Funds?
It can be used for local road projects.
Okay, because I was thinking, one of the funds, we can only spend like fifty percent of it, is that this one, or am I thinking of something else maybe? So we could use any amount of money from this one for match?
Um, there, I think in prior years, we have budgeted, um, we, we did not budget a, a Community, um, Crossings Matching Grant. Out of this year's, um, in this year's budget, we have in prior years. And I, I don't think I could answer your question, um, specifically, without doing more research on, on that specific fund.
Because I knew we had a line item, I just didn't remember what the, there were any stipulations on how much money could be spent for different, different issues, so, okay.
Yeah, the last time we did Community Crossings, we used a hundred and fifteen thousand out of MVA.
Okay. For a match?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, no, that was not the match, Gail, no, 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 that was for expenditures on the actual project. That would not been a match, that would have been for actual expenditures on the spending.
Okay. So is this match?
This is what this is, correct?
Yes, but, but
Expenditures on the actual project, it's just that this is, I don't know.
A match is considered the same thing, you take the total cost of the project, and you're going to get, owe X amount of dollars in grant funds, and you're going to have X amount of dollars in match funds. And it's equal to the total project cost.
Is this a ten percent?
Pardon?
Is this a ten percent match?
This was a twenty-five percent match.
Twenty-five percent match?
Yeah. So the project is what, three hundred and forty-seven?
That's what I thought, about three forty-two, I think it's. What was the last time it went through, so we're asking for the same amount we asked for the last time?
It's up very, very slightly. Less than a thousand dollars.
Okay.
Okay, so we're, we're on them.
Are you second it?
Um, is there any further discussion? We'll proceed with the roll call vote. Gail Connor?
Aye.
Sandra Flora?
Aye.
Spencer Kingery?
Aye.
Woody Nelson?
Aye.
Yeah, motion carries. Um, before we move on to council, uh, comments and requests, um, I just wanted to also let you know, uh, it's kind of an announcement that, uh, we sent out this week, um, requests for proposals to, for banking services to the five local banks, uh, with a due date on that of, uh, February fifth, and, uh, our goal is to have all of those back so that we can evaluate them and, um, present them to Board of Works and to council at our March first meeting.